Account for the.
Okay, we are recording. We're going to call to order this second meeting of the. Charter review commission today is Tuesday, May 28th. I have 6:05 PM. We have in attendance myself, Jody Gross, Jeff McGuire, Adrian Mandeville, the folks in Town Hall, Carol Lee, tell me their names again.
Hat Billings and Karen the door.
Thank you. And members of the public, Catherine McGoldy Lewis, Louise. Forgot. Goodwin, Goodwin, Leanne Hutchinson. And seven, four, two, five, four, seven, five. Can you unmute and identify yourself, please?
I think that's Leanne.
Hi, this is Leanne. That's, that is me.
Okay, you appear twice here. That's interesting.
She appears twice because she does not speaker on her computer.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're familiar with all this, Jeff?
Let's go.
All right, so we are called to order. The next agenda item is public speak. Any members of the public will just, we'll just poll them. Catherine?
Yeah, I have a couple of things, please. I was looking at the minute of the 22nd. And I had asked for two things. I had asked to change the name from the Board of Selectmen to the Select Board. And for the charter to hopefully you're probably maybe be in English, but neither one of those are in minutes. The other thing was, I know that Shannon had given specific sections that she wanted or asked to please be reviewed. But I couldn't find those sections there either. And I just thought, you know, if those were specific sections as she, she was good enough to ask about that. Maybe we should have those specific sections in the minutes. And the only other thing I wanted to add to, which I didn't have before, was also adding page numbers to the charter and the index. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Louise Goodwin.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Leanne?
Yes, thanks. You, you may cover some of this, but I had a couple of questions slash concerns. One is that I don't see much in the way of specifics about what you've actually been charged to do this time around. It doesn't seem like there's been too much publicity about this. So it seems to have come up suddenly, whether it has or not. I wonder if you are able to respond now, or if it's going to become apparent as to actually what you're charged with doing and, and, and how that came about.
It will become apparent a little bit. I can say we don't have a formal charge, but I have a list of personal items.
Bob, just as a point of reference, it's public speak. You just allow them to talk and you don't have to respond to them. I mean, it's not a negative. Leanne, we will do it. Bob is correct, but you don't have to.
All right, to be clear, I, I think Bob is chairing. There are no, he can set the rules however he likes. If he wants to respond, he has the option to do that. We want to, as a group, decide to respond or not, we have the option to do that. So I think given the limited amount of people that showed up, it's not a big deal, but that's up to the board. If we want to make rules for public speak, then we need to make them otherwise.
You said it's up to Bob, so Bob, it's up to you.
We have a few enough people here that I don't mind responding, especially since what Leanne is, is asking. I have an answer for. So if anybody else wants to jump in, that's fine also. What I started to say, Jeff, was that some of what she is asking. I have a little list of action items here that I want to get to, and some of what she's asking will be answered. So.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm glad you're going to get to that because as I said, I haven't, I looked at the minutes from the last meeting and they're, you know, it was pretty, um, you know, didn't seem to have a lot of explanation about discussion, which is fine, but, but those are the things I'm interested in. And I do understand that, for example, the Board of Selectmen has people speak, but then doesn't necessarily have a dialogue with them right away. So I appreciate you, um, you know, your answer here, Bob, because I know it can be done either way.
All right. Uh, that's.
And, and Bob, since, since we're responding, just to let Catherine know, the actual meeting minutes from the special meeting didn't have anything from that public hearing that was before the special meeting. So there were actually two meetings last time. So I, I don't know what was published, but the actual special meeting minutes, the what, the public speak at the end, the, the public speak at the beginning didn't have anybody say anything. That's why you didn't see their comments there.
Well, actually, the note that I have, I don't know if this has been made public yet, Jody, but there was some overlap between what was in the, the public speak in the, in the hearing, as well as the items that we then kind of reviewed again in the, in the charter meeting. So I, I've got, we'll get.
No, no, well, there wasn't an overlap.
No, I think it's, I think, I think Jody's point is that there were two separate meetings technically, and so the.
Correct. When, when Catherine gave her input that she's talking about select men to select board and, you know, being more plain English and Shannon's comments, all were in that public hearing. So they weren't recorded in the minutes of our meetings that you chaired, and I was secretary, just making that point.
Okay, so noted. All right.
Thank you.
Anything else from the public? All right, so that brings us to discussion and possible action upon any charter. Jack can barely read what's on my computer here. Pardon me. Charter revision issues. Okay, so I created just for my own edification here a little action item list that I wanted to go over. Just a kind of referee, as I said in the last meeting, I see my job mostly as a traffic cop and a referee for this. Um, one of the questions that Leanne asked is, and the, the charter revision process itself calls for a set of recommendations or a charge from the Board of Selectmen to the Commission. And as far as I understand, we have not received any such formal communication from the Board of Selectmen. Now luckily, we have the first selectmen here. Jeff, can you tell us, are we going to receive a formal charge from the Board of Selectmen?
No, you will not receive a written charge from the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen discussed various issues at our meeting, not in great detail, but every charter commission committee has the authority to do what it sees fit related to what it would like to change within the charter. So you won't see a formal document.
Okay, so relating to that, then, just for clarification, you brought up a number of different comments, suggestions, ideas relating to potential charter revisions. So just to clarify, these are your input as a citizen of the town and don't reflect anything official from the Board of Selectmen.
Well, again, the Board of Selectmen has to approve everything that the Charter Revision Committee does before it, it gets sent to referendum. So if, if, if the Board of Selectmen does not approve what is done here, it will not move forward. In totality, it could be totally scrapped. We could be wasting our entire time and it could be totally scrapped. Or it could all move on.
Again, it doesn't really address what I just asked you. So the source of what you vocalized here last week is not.
I'll take it as my personal opinion.
Okay, that's fine. Just, just for the record. Okay. So again. Real quick, Bob.
Go ahead.
Yeah, was there anything? And then I didn't go back to specific meetings and try to find it. Was there anything in notes noted? Did you guys actually put anything in the notes as far as for what specific, specific things were brought up? I know Eric had some comment, commentary in a couple of meetings, but was there anything put forward at all?
Nothing, nothing documented. No.
Okay, so just the things that Eric had talked about, but, but nothing beyond that. Okay. I just wanted to clarify. That's all. Thank you, Bob. Sorry. Okay, no, thank you for the input. So, um, I have. Bob, where do you want to go?
Excuse me?
Kind of free rain, Bob. Where do you want to go? Do you got an action list or? I do actually, and this is, so I have the, the draft meeting minutes that Jody put together. And I've taken that along with the draft special, the, the, excuse me, um, public hearing minutes that were put together and I have a list of items here. And really what, where I was going with this is between the public input and the commentary made by the Commission, there are several potential changes that were put forward. And one of the things that I want to get done tonight is to codify and clarify and prioritize, prioritize these changes into a formal list. Okay, you know, specific measurable, actionable things that will serve as our official charge moving forward. And what those things comprise at this point, just to go through them. Uh, their bullet points that Jody put together, dollar amounts to trigger town meetings, early voting, dates of elections, aligning the Board of Education budget timing. Bob, Bob, do you mind just, is it possible for you to screen share those so we can have that for the public? Can I screen share those? Let's see.
The green arrow at the bottom.
I see. Yep.
Bob, whatever is on your screen will appear. Please know that.
Yep, I see. Let me just hang on. Let me just make sure that the screen is clear or sanitary at least. Okay. How's, how's this look? Thank you so much. Okay, so I was going through that list that I've got here. So this was the, the draft um, that Jody had put together. And as I said, I, I kind of gleaned some things from there as well as from the, uh, public hearing. And this is what we've got kind of as our, as our list of bullet points. So dollar amounts, early voting, elections, town clerk position, uh, change to a town council as a legislative body. Alternatively, keeping the Board of Selectmen, but merging the Board of Functions and a Board of Finance Functions and eliminating the Board of Finance, uh, major versus minor ordinance procedures. Uh, not having a first selectman, but instead have a chairperson like the Board of Ed, Board of Finance, planning and zoning, and town meeting adjustments. So this is a nice overview, 10,000 foot level, but this isn't something that's really actionable. So what I'd like to achieve tonight among the Commission members here is to turn these single bullet items into a few sentences, a paragraph, something that somebody reading it can say, aha. Before we go ahead and do that, let me just share, this is, this is my notes here that I've been reading off of. One of my goals in codifying this into a, a list of specific items is that I would like to suggest that for each action item that we defined, that we have one or more members assigned to be an advocate or a champion for that item. And that person will have ownership of the item, research it, present it, defend the idea of subsequent meetings. Okay, including what's being proposed, how it will be implemented, what any transition would look like from how things are being done now, what the implications and ramifications would be on the rest of the charter, and beyond that, the greater town functioning and governance. Anybody else who wants to, to contribute to that advocacy? And similarly, anybody who wants to argue against it, this isn't intended to lock anybody out, but it's intended to make each item, uh, have a point person that, that can own it and advocate for it. And the idea here, here is to spread the labor and keep any one individual from hogging the spotlight. So we each act as an advocate and we each act, you know, jointly in the capacity to adjudicate and decide upon the outcomes. Uh, can you just slide that window over so we can see the, what was the very last thing on your sheet? Yeah, hang on. Action items. There we go. Town meeting, okay. Town meeting adjustments. Okay, so that's kind of my, my goal for where we are tonight.
Hey, hey, Bob, so it was really an advocate. Was there a contrarian for each? I'm, I just, I forgot what you said there.
No, I wouldn't define a specific contrarian. Anybody can be a contrarian.
Okay, but at least you want someone that's an advocate or someone that's really trying to dig into it to try to drive. Is this an issue to?
Right, and anybody, anybody can jump in and help and be another advocate if they want, but I want there to be a specific owner, at least one owner for each idea there. Well, but I, I think there's a difference. I think someone can be an owner and not necessarily be an advocate. I think there, I think it would be, be better if whoever's doing it can present both sides. You know, I mean, I think that you need to prevent a fair argument. So I may be completely for something, but at the same time, it's still my responsibility, uh, as you mentioned, Bob, to say what the effects are that of, of that change may be. So there may be some negative effects of that. And I don't think it's, I don't think it's a bad idea to have that person, if they're doing the research anyways, to come forward and say, hey, well, you know, changing this may be good in this way, but here are some repercussions that may happen if we do that as well. So.
I, I agree with Adrian. I think that's a great idea. He's had a pros, cons, position as an owner.
To the extent that somebody can, can fairly and, and dispassionately argue both sides of an issue, absolutely. Okay, you know? My, my oversight, this is why we have a committee and not just one person. Okay, um, and then the other thing related to that is I think before proceeding in depth in the review of these items, I think it would be helpful if we had a preliminary poll of the Commission on their initial opinion of the soundness of each item. So we can gauge how readily the Commission might approve or reject and how much effort we might want to put into, into these things. It would be nice if we can do this without really coloring the decision-making process, but I think it kind of helps to know before going really into depth. You know, what I was thinking here is before you take a, a, a case to trial, there's an evidentiary hearing and you want to see, you know, how strong, it's, it's kind of the same concept that, you know, do you have something strong here? Do you have something weak? It's, it's, maybe it's not the best analogy, but I, I think it might help us. Any thoughts on this?
You want a grand jury of this? Yeah, let's go.
Yeah. Hey, Bob, I have another con- concept I wanted to put on the table.
Go ahead.
I, I'm, I'm sort of of this camp that I would rather have two or three impactful items if we had to spend what limited time we have as opposed to, you know, 15 smaller changes, right? And that's just my personal view, and I don't know if that colors sort of how we tackle this list.
Well, Jody, what, what about if we?
I, I think, I think I like Bob's idea in the sense that if we, if we all agree that, let's say there's five of these or six of these that, that we all agree that we should attack or attack, I should say. If we do that and we say, well, listen, what are the, what are the least? What are the, what are the things that are easiest to pick off? Like, we need, now we need to do dollar amounts, early voting, things like that, right? So maybe three of these are really easy and low hanging fruit, and maybe we pick two that are more involved.
Yeah, agreed. So I was going to piggyback a, a, I was going to say a little bit more first.
Go ahead.
Usually a bucket of technical changes in these types of things that are, um, you know, some of what Shannon loud and said in, in, um, in public speak, right? Oh, this word or that needs to be cleaned up. Um, but I, I like where Adrian's going in the sense that maybe we could, we could try to size it to as, you know, as we go through it. This is a bigger issue. Um, and it, you know, maybe a small, medium, large. In, in, in my business, we call it T-shirt sizing.
Right.
Um, so Bob, I, I'll, I'll sit there and I'll second what you did. I, I really do think you need to sit there and whittle this list down. If there are items that the group, the seven members, uh, there's not four people that want to move forward with a given idea. There's no reason to waste any time.
Yep. Okay. Do you think we could do that right now?
Thoughts? Let's go.
Yeah, I, I would just like, if we do this, before we vote on an item, let's just do a quick, any, any quick comments. So for instance, if we talk about dollar ma- uh, dollar amounts for, for, for town meetings, I think we need some feedback from Eric before I would say yea or nay on that totally, but I think initially we have to do it, right? So some things.
Adrian, isn't the issue that, that setting a new dollar amount would be appropriate? And then you'd say, okay, let's move forward with that idea and then come up with the dollar amount that's, that is meaningful and impactful.
Yep, so I want to have just a little bit like this for each.
Yeah, no problem. Let's go.
Yeah. Okay, Bob. For what it's worth, I mean, I was kind of hoping that we could do this without getting into the weeds tonight, you know, that we stay at the 10,000 foot level. Okay, and not, not get, get caught up in the details. Yep. Okay. So just give us 10 seconds, 15 seconds, whatever. I'm just saying a little bit before we say yea or nay. Okay, so do we need to follow Robert's rules on all of these things, or can we just informally say yea or nay and go down the list? I think we, I'm okay with yea or nay and go down the list, you know, with, with, again, any, any quick comments on each one, that's all. Okay. Um, how about this? Is there anyone who is opposed to tackling the idea of dollar amounts to trigger town meetings?
No.
Okay, so we're going to keep that. Yep. Okay. Early voting. And what does that actually comprise? I mean, again, without getting into too deep details, we talking about opening up the voting window for general elections to a week or two weeks or?
That's Connecticut state law, so I don't know if it's really something necessary to put in our charter.
We may have to clean up the charter simply to remove some of the things that limits within the charter rather than add. Okay.
We just put a line that said we are following the Connecticut state statutes.
Right, exactly. And then pull out anything that limits. Okay, so Adrian, is this your example of low hanging fruit? Yes. Okay, anyone object to it?
No.
Not hearing any? Okay. So we'll keep that. Uh, dates of elections. I, I think the, the comment on that was also about whether we should be aligning with Hebron so that we're, because especially now that we're talking about going to early voting, all these other things, having multiple voting dates that then require multiple early voting is an issue. Hebron already has aligned with the RAM budget for their voting. We would, I think it'd be a good idea to do the same.
That goes into budget timing in the charter. So it's not, it's, it's not necessarily, it is a date of a referendum related to the budget and, and the timing of the budget would have to be adjusted.
Exactly.
So, but the date of elections, let's just sit there and go, an election is when someone's running for public office. A referendum is a different, it still falls to the same, but it's talked about differently in the charter. So.
So this is really two concepts. I think date of elections actually felt it early voting. There, there was secondary discussion about, which is, again, maybe not necessarily highlighted on this list about aligning our budgeting for referendum with Hebron.
Correct.
Right, so. I'm sorry. Okay.
Go ahead, Carol.
I was just going to say, if you look at Hebron's town charter, um, the way that they did that so they could vote at the same time as RAM, they eliminated any kind of a town budget meeting. So what they do is they have the dates very specific in their charter so that they're able to have the referendum on the first day following, or on the Tuesday following the first Monday and met. So they really moved everything up in dates far as at the end of fiscal year. But I'm just saying, trying to say that if you look at Hebron's town charter, which is what our charter was written almost word for word like, that will show us an easy path how to do that and align with frame for our referendum.
Yeah, okay, so does anyone have? I mean, I, I'm sitting there looking at dates of election. I think you write keep, and then I think you put another line under it, Bob, to sit there and say referendum dating. And I'd be a keep for that one as well. I agree with Jeff.
It sounded like the issue was that our town budget with Rams was the, was the connection there though. Am I, am I missing what, what the point was?
That's the, that's the issue that, but the issue is we have a town meeting where we have to, we'd have to push everything back. If we want to keep the town meeting, we're going to have to start really early in order to have time to do it. And there's a risk that if at a town meeting, a budget fails, you would get out of cycle. If it failed at a town meeting and we said, no, we're not going to send it to the town versus saying, okay, the board, in other words, their Board of Selectmen can just move it directly to a town, to a, to a town vote. We move it to a town meeting and then to a town vote.
Board of Finance actually can directly to the referendum after holding their public hearing.
Yes, I'm sorry. You're correct, Carol.
Yeah, okay.
And so you'd have to move the public hearing up to this, to the time, to a different timeline. There's other issues in our charter that would have to be moved.
I think there's a, there's a plausibility question, and I think that you, you risk, I think you got to put it out to the public if you're going to do that. I don't, you know.
It's going to go to the public.
Well, I think at the end of the day here, we're saying, keep it. I was just trying to size it. Maybe we should just keep, keep moving.
Yeah, well, also, let's keep in mind that there are things further on that could completely impact and collide with that also. So.
We get, well, why don't you put, why don't you put them in, Bob, into the simple category and the more detailed category? Right? So the first two, the dollar amounts, early voting, dates of election are all simple issues.
Referendum. Let's just keep going through the list and we'll do that after.
Yep, fine.
Well, I can, I can, yeah, I, I agree. Uh, town clerk position appointed versus elected. This has, uh, gotten a lot of discussion around town already. Well, let's start with Carol Lee. Where's she at?
I'm still new to, I just would like to hear both sides. I've been doing a lot of research and taking a lot of input myself, so staying open to it.
But Carol, I mean, the reality is if you're against this, the town's not going to approve it. So we don't want to waste a lot of time on this if you're not going to be in favor of it. I mean, I personally will say right now, I have no problem with saying, why don't you make this your baby and you tell us what you want to do? And, you know, if you, if you come forward with something that you can, you find acceptable, great. And if not, then it's not worth us trying to do anything else.
Well, I don't necessarily think that this is an issue where we can't all come to some sort of alignment on. It may not be perfect, but the town administrator is a perfect example of this situation. We had an elected official in the first selectment, and then we replaced that with a town administrator. And that individual, uh, that, that job is now solidified and it's the same thing.
I, I get what you're saying, Jeff, but the reality is very simple.
I understand and I, but I'm explaining, I, Adrian, I'm explaining it. I'm explaining it for Carol, like, because she understands Carol's, Carol understands. She's not Carol, when you leave and your next election comes up in 2027, if, if you leave and it's an elected position and someone else runs, the town is in jeopardy of having someone that is not as qualified as you sit in that position. And it'd be, it's not, and it's not an appropriate way to govern.
Okay, Jeff, Jeff, I got, I'm cut, I'm cutting you off because we're getting into the details. And I didn't want to get into, into the details now. I want to counter Adrian's suggestion. Uh, to me, it smacks of conflict of interest for Carol to be the one who
I agree.
Who talks about this. I think we need to have somebody other than her research this.
Although I think it'd be valuable if she provided input because she's so close to it.
Well, obviously she knows more about this than anybody else, but I think as we hand these things out, this should be somebody else's responsibility. Well, but, but to the, to my point, if I finish it is that you could have someone in this committee spend a lot of time on this, and if Carol doesn't agree with it, you know it's never going to pass. When we had, when we had the town administrator's position, as Jeff was talking about, we had several people as, as elected administrators prior to that that were a complete shit show, for lack of a better term. And it, it behooves the town to move to, uh, someone who was qualified. Right now, you've got someone who has been a pillar of the community for 30 plus years that's universally loved. If that person says no, no one's voting for it, and you've wasted a lot of time on something that, that's not going to get approved. So that's my point.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to ask Carol, Carol, were, were you, and you won't answer this, but this is the question I would like you to answer. Were you in favor of the town administrator when it came up for vote?
I had very mixed emotions then too. I thought it was honestly a quick, it was a what, a two or three charter revision, and then it was put to the voters on a. Was it what? A two or three charter revision? And then it was put to the voters on a. May, you know, I think the another precedent. So. I really didn't think too much about it at the time. Um, and I had mixed emotions then, like I have mixed emotions about. Town clerk, too. Um, I think there is a huge benefit for having a town resident. He has. Physical and emotional ties to the office. And with Eric, as you just said, Eric is a lifetime resident. So that's a different thing. He's here, he has ties to this community, and his heart is here as mine, so. I still have mixed emotions about elected and appointed as elected. Person has real tie to the community, a love for our community, our staff. So I see both sides.
Yeah, I say we keep it, and I think Adrian's point is if Carol's gonna really be opposed to this, we should know that very early. Um, and Jeff, your point is well taken. I mean, perhaps there's even. Um, there's some, maybe there's some sort of hybrid that could be created, right? That there are. Um, you know, maybe I don't I don't know if this is possible, but is are there elected officials that'll have certain qual? It's an elected thing that people have certain qualifications for, or, um, I don't know if that's something that's allowed. Have a certain level of business professional experience or this level of degree or this, you know, and it's still elected.
Jody. Go ahead. The flip side of that is it could be a hired position with a residency requirement.
Or residency preference.
Yeah, but I mean, policeman.
Yeah, agreed. And that's a hybrid, too. Agreed. I understand. So I'd say we keep this. And Adrian's point, I think, was a good one. If Carol's gonna say, nah, you know, we shouldn't even touch this, then we should know that early. And it I'm not hearing that from her.
Well, listen, Carol's next election is in 2027. It's this change cannot go into effect until after 2027. And to be really honest, if Carol wanted the job, the people that are running the town at that point in time would be stupid not to hire.
Point taken.
All right, so let's move on. It's 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 honestly, it's a keep, and if we can get four keeps, we move on.
Okay. Okay.
I'm not, we still got one person who has not said anything. Is it Miss Billings there in the back?
Actually, two Karen Midor also.
Where's?
Okay, sorry, I just unmuted. Karen's.
I don't see Carol. Thank you.
Facing there, hi. We're trying to sit so we can see the screen here, sharing it, so it's kind of tough.
We're gonna get you guys a bench next time.
Yeah, please pipe in, though.
Okay, pop in every now and then. Okay.
Or or get them some laptops that they can sit in front of, so everybody's got their own camera.
I offered I offered mine, but to no avail. But it looks like the Muppets over there. Everybody's sitting every now and then somebody just leans in, you know? Yes, exactly.
All right, moving on, we have a bunch of things that I think are uh, inter inter interchanged with each other. So we have the concept of changing the town council, changing to a town council form of government. Um, or alternatively, keeping the Board of Selectmen, merging the Board of Finance functions. Um, there's, there's a lot of things that are all. All put together and, uh, Jeff, you've been the the champion for this, the the advocate, the the spokesperson. Say a little bit more for us.
Well, I I mean, this is just something where the group has to sit there and say, I I do not want to waste a lot of time on this. I do believe that the town would be better served, and I'll I'll list out the reasons. You have a Board of Finance, it's a seven member committee, and you have a Board of Selectmen, it's a five member committee. So you have 12 volunteers that are essentially. Uh, not doing the same exact work, but they are working in parallel. And with the current situation where we have that many volunteers and that many un. Contested elections that have gone on and tried to find volunteers. I do believe that a town council that would absorb. The roles and responsibilities of the Board of Finance would be more appropriate for our community. Now. I will sit there and I will tell you. That the last budget that was put out came to the Board of Selectmen, and by the time it got through every meeting. That was required to it and through to the town meeting, it changed by a total of $16,000. And that's occurred probably on the the last five or six budgets that have gone before the town. The last budget that had any major changes to it was when Adrian was the chairperson of the Board of Finance. And that was six years ago, seven years ago. So how I would do it would be, I'll just give you a high level view. I would sit there and it wouldn't go into effect until 2027, when the Board of Selectmen is up for reelection. Uh, I would turn that over into four members running for election to whatever the new board is named, the Select Board or the Town Council, whatever it would be. And I would take the three remaining members of the Board of Finance that still have. Two years left on their terms, and they would be the the other three members of that board. And you would have a co-mingling of the two boards. And then what would happen would be that board would then be responsible for. The priorities for the town, establishing the financial budget for the town, managing that financial budget for the town and moving forward. And I'll even go back to this, so everybody understands why I'm recommending this. You gotta look at every portion of the town. It's it's a $4 million component right now. Little bit harder, higher for some of the educational components. So there's $4 million for RAM, there's $4 million for AES, there's $4 million for the town. Of the $4 million for the town, about 1.5 million is capital. So you set those priorities, those priorities are established, equipment, fire trucks, whatever is required. And the remainder is a $2.5 million operating budget. And of the $2.5 million operating budget, and greater than 50% of that budget is is employee costs. So the reason why I'm suggesting this is you'll have. Potentially, not absolute, but potentially better candidates because there's smaller number of roles. You'll have a group of people that will move from one. You'll never have a complete clean sweep on this board, which you should never have. And so you'd go four to three, and it would just make more efficiency sense, because what you'd also have is you'd have. Everybody that presents to the Board of Selectmen and presents to the Board of Finance has to do it twice. Eric has to go to double the meetings. And I I just look at it totally as an efficiency. And the ability to potentially have contested elections and getting a better pool of volunteers. That's as simple as it gets. Nothing else, nothing nefarious. Uh, it may not fly, and that's okay. I wanted to put it out there for everybody to understand that this is how the this town should run in the future.
Jeff, how do you, um, obviously, sometimes people might think about things like checks and balances where you have. You know, in the corporate world, or even in judicial, you know, and sort of politics and judicial world and legislative world, there's sort of. You know, you you try to have two, two layers or or two different. Um, you know, checks and balances approach. Does that is 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 your thinking that this is just so small? Of a there there isn't, you know, you're saying it's only $16,000 was adjusted in a budget that you don't need that?
Well, the issue that I have is, and finally, after years and years and years of trying, Jody, we finally got to the point where we reconcile our bank accounts timely. So when you sit there and say checks and balances, we've had terrible controls within our town for years and years and years and years. And we've finally gotten to the point, because of software and because of people, that we can actually reconcile our accounts timely. So I also look at it as we have two signers on every check. There's very little that can happen at a board level. To screw it up, to be really honest, at a board level. This is my personal opinion as an accountant. As at a board level, at a at an operational level and a. Um, in the the weeds of this, there are possibilities that things could occur. Uh, but again, it's a $2.5 million operating budget. At the town level, that this board would be under control. And again, 50% of that is payroll. So I don't look at it as, um, as a concern. I understand the checks and balance needs, and I understand the treasurer's role and 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 trying to do that, but, um. I don't necessarily know that the Board of Finance, um, and Adrian would be able to speak better to this being on that board. I'm not sure that the Board of Finance gets down in the weeds to sit there and check. Check and balance the community. The only thing that I look at from my experience is that. You know, if there's a transfer made at the end of the year, the Board of Finance needs to approve over a certain level. Um, but Adrian would be better positioned for that.
For point of reference, it really depends on the board. I know the the board prior to me getting on there, and then once I was on, and then even when I was chair. We got into the weeds a lot of the budget, but we did that because we felt that the the Board of Selectmen. That that was sending us a budget at that time, and the and the town administrator were not doing their job. But also, it had been a it had been a longstanding policy that. Every town department by charter actually is supposed to go to the Board of Finance to present their budget, not to not actually to the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen calling them in and going through that is a is a process that was picked up, but it's actually not in the charter, going to the Board of Finances. So we took that seriously when I was on the Board of Finance and then the board prior to my my being there, took it seriously and went through every every. The role is dependent upon the board, and so that's one part of it. And I think. Sometimes one, you know, Board Selectmen picks it up, sometimes Board of Finance picks it up. I think. My personal opinion is this current Board of Finance hasn't done that in any way, shape or form. They sort of. Take them with the Board of Selectmen brings through, and for the most part, rubber stamped it. And I don't know that that's good either, so.
Okay, I just want to jump in here and and give a thought here, which is a little bit more conceptual, but. Am I unmuted?
Hmm, you're fine.
Yeah, okay. Um, a little more conceptual and something that I think applies certainly to this, but it applies to everything that we look at. If we're suggesting a change to the charter, because some practice or process has become difficult or inefficient or unwieldy. Then I think we need to ask ourselves, does the problem lie in the underlying structural concepts that are delineated in the charter itself? Or can we modify the implementation of those concepts so as to streamline the process? And, you know, the analogy that comes to mind is if the front door hinges squeak, you don't tear down the house. So, um, you know, I just I just want to throw that in for what it's worth. You know, I hear some of that in what Adrian is saying. And, um, this is granted, what we're talking about here is a very big change. And so I think we have to, we have to look at this from as many different angles as we can before we would seriously consider it. And like I say.
In in theory, though, Adrian, I think what I heard you say is a Board of Finance. As a structure today, a Board of Finance would create a budget, scrutinize it, sort of a bottom up approach. Scrutinize it from each of the departments, and then that budget goes to the selectmen to approve. Is that how that works? And then it goes to the town?
Well, there is a, the town administrator generally put forward a budget. And then we would call in each department to ask them to justify the budget that was given to us through the town administrator. Whether it was the whether it was the board, whether it was the selectmen, or whether it was the town, the town admin as it is now. They're all submitting budgets to him, and then he's bringing them to us, and we would actually bring each person in and say, okay. Public Works, why do you want this? Why do you want that? Sometimes Public Works would say, well, we wanted this too, but but it's not in there because the. You know, the the town administrator said he wouldn't agree with it. So sometimes we would put that back in if they made a good case. Sometimes we would take out something that they wanted and say, you know, based on your schedule. That that isn't allowed this year. It's not, it's not in your schedule of purchasing of equipment, so that's not happening this year. But so there is a, there's, there was a lot more intricacies done in the past, you know, getting into the weeds.
And then where we're gonna go after that? Board of Finance creates the budget. Where does it go after that?
We then have a, we'd have several meetings that were open to the public, and then we would vote that budget to go to a to a town meeting.
So the Board of Selectmen is not involved at all in creation of the budget?
You go by the charter? Not really, no.
Okay, thank you. That helps very much. We understand.
Just to quickly jump in, if you read section 400 of the town charter, that delineates all the duties of the Board of Selectmen. 701D delineates the duties of the town administrator as far as preparing the budget. For the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. Final duties are with the Board of Finance, and that's delineated in section 802 of the charter. And that will give you a clear definition of everybody's duties. Um. Dictated by our charter.
Thank you.
And so what I would recommend is that you create a seven member board that would consolidate the functions of the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. And you still continue to have. And and I know I I heard Carol say something about not a town meeting, but the 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 hearing, a budget hearing. Being more appropriate, but the town needs to be the community, especially the motivated individuals that come to a town. Uh, town meeting, the 47 party individuals that came to our last budget meeting. Um, they need to have their say, and I'm I'm all for that. I just think that consolidating those two roles and making it more streamlined, more efficient. And again, having the ability to have potentially contested elections means something in this type of in this small of a town.
I I'm gonna, I will say this, and this this is probably the last thing I'm gonna say on these two things, but at least at this meeting. Um, I think if we are talking about actually aligning our referendums. And that is, and their risk of that is that we need to eliminate the town meeting. Then I I don't think you go forward with this, this change as well. I think you can do one or the other, but I think you can't do both. That's my own take on it, because if you take away the second board and the Board of Finance. Becomes one board with the Board of Selectmen. Then if you are also then taking away the town meeting, that feels maybe like you're taking too much out of the town, the town folks' hands. Do I I don't necessarily, I I think in bigger bigger towns, it's more accepted. But I think in a small town like Andover, where there's still a lot of desire, at least, from from a good portion of the populace to. To have their say, whether they exercise it or not, that's their own choice, but but they want to have that option, so. That's my own take on it.
Okay, so this is clearly an important subject. That everybody has a lot of ideas on, uh, but going back to where we started on this. Uh, can we reasonably assess its probability of of getting through this commission and moving on? Does anybody want to come out and say how they feel yay or nay about this at this point?
I just say that I think that taking two separate boards. Each whose duties are delineated by Charter, section 400 and 800. And dumping all of those duties onto a seven member pool. And putting a lot more on those seven members. So. I would not, I am not in favor of that at this time. I will stay open to hear things, but I am not in favor.
Well, I I have to say I feel about the same way that Carol does. I'm not convinced. Um, and I would tend to try to work out every detail to streamline the process within the framework that we have now, rather than tearing it down.
Okay, and just so, I I don't necessarily know, Bob, that tearing it down is a good term for what I'm recommending. I'm trying to be more efficient with what of time we have available to us as volunteers. And being on one of the boards, understanding what one of the boards does. I don't necessarily know that it's that much more work. I will defer to Adrian, who's served on both of those boards, to sit there and and tell the committee. If it's that much more work, the issue ends up being if it's not gonna get four votes. Potentially get four votes. Please, I do not want to waste my time to sit there and champion this issue. So if Carol is 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 a no, and I would assume. That there's your no, Bob, let's go. If there's two other people, then I don't want to waste any time.
Aaron, the door here, um, I say no as well because Adrian, uh, he knows we are a small town.
One more?
Yes. Well, Adrian, we are a small town. Building. Day. I think it's too much for seven.
I think it's too much for seven.
Okay, let's go.
Bob, Jeff assumed you're a no. I don't, I I I'm like, you know, unless you feel like you want to voice an opinion, I don't think we should assume your opinion. You could say you don't have it, you're undecided, but I don't want to assume you're a no.
I'm seventy-five percent no at this point, okay? We take a very, very strong, compelling, convincing argument for me to change my mind. How's that?
Adrian, you were on both boards. The amount of work required.
I don't think the amount of work required is gonna go up dramatically, but I think that you would say that. I I would say you're probably gonna add. An hour to a Board of Selectmen meeting. You know, so whatever you're doing for a meeting, now you're gonna add an hour to it, I think. Most of the stuff that the Board of Board of Finance does on the day-to-day stuff. You guys already did, you know, there's a, there's a good portion that, you know, during budget season, that's a little bit different, but again, as we just talked about. For some, for for a lot of it, it can be repetitive unless you have really one board digging in, so. I don't know that it's that much more.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna also vote no, because I don't really want to go forward with the effort. To put this in front of this Charter Committee and then have it be rejected. So it can come up at another Charter Revision Committee.
Okay.
Just a, um, just to call out the the folks for having difficulty hearing. Um, the other folks in Carol's call. So when you guys, Karen and Pat, when you guys speak up, if you guys could try to come towards the. Microphone or the computer, that would be helpful. Thank you. Bob, I think you're on mute, Bob.
Yeah, the dog was barking, so. Um, okay, so that's a no on. Uh, going to a town council as well as uh, keeping the Board of Selectmen, merging the Board of Finance, both of those concepts. We're going to defer.
Yes.
All right. Just since it's kind of related to that, I'm gonna skip over one here. It's been suggested that the first selectman not be separately elected. But instead be selected by the Board of uh, Selectmen, just like the other. Uh, Commissions and Boards in town. Thoughts on this one?
I I thought this was a good, Jeff suggested it the other day and I've been thinking about it and it sounds like a good one to me. I mean, I I've observed several. Several of the meetings and it it, um, it appears that it's very much facilitation. Um, and um, and I think it, I think it works well when that actual, that group. Can make that election as opposed to, um, you know, an understanding who sort of has the, who has that skill set, so it felt. Felt good to me.
And I think, I think having an elected board, uh, first selectman is a holdover from before we had. A town administrator when we had a strong first selectman and and you know, now.
Old mayor style.
Yeah, exactly. And now that we have Eric in place, I don't think it needs to be a separately elected position, so.
I would agree. I would also point out that if we're doing that, though. We may want to look at other portions of the Charter that make that position. Um, the Chief of Police and the, you know, all all these other little things.
The part, all the downstream stuff. Carol and Pat and Karen, anything that you, from you guys on this one?
I agree. I think it's a good idea to elect that way and I think we could increase. Number of candidates, maybe two, rather than just. Right now, it's restricted, each town committee can nominate one for first select. And then two. Look into increasing the number, I mean, it's five positions. You know, maybe increasing the number that the town committees can first and the number that are electors can vote.
Carol, can you explain that again? I didn't understand it.
Neither did I.
Okay, so right now, the town committees can put up one candidate for first select. And two candidates for Board of Select. Which six people can be put up for five positions. You open it up and just do Board of Selectmen. Increase the number that the elect, that the town committees can put forward and that the electors can vote.
I think the con, oh, I'm sorry, Carol, were you done?
I was, yes.
I think the concept here was that we have five selectmen in our town. Um, and then, once those five selectmen are elected. That board is is created and then at that point, they elect. The Chairperson.
Right, but what I'm saying, moving forward with that, we may be able to increase. The number of candidates that are put on the ballot, because right now. There are only six people being put up for five positions.
Oh, I see, so. Carol, where is that in the Charter?
For electing the selectmen?
Yeah, the number, because really there's eight, there can be up to eight people put up. For five positions. You'd have the two, because of the way the town charter is written, there's the first selectman race. And then there's the selectman race.
Correct. And each town committee can put up two members.
No. It's three members. Yeah, that's why I'm asking, that's why I'm asking you where it is in the Charter that says.
Or section four oh one.
Oh, right, number. Members, no more than three members of such boards will be at the same.
Political. It doesn't, and and this is, that, that's why I was asking you, um. I would like to stand there. Yeah, that's the, that's the, that's the minority party. Rule, like you can only have three men, three members from one party. So that you'd have some minority representation. I don't believe. Carol, that there's a limitation on the number of candidates that any party can put up.
Yes, there are, and that's with our elections. If you remember the ballot from this past November, right?
Yeah.
You got an N, we're on the Democratic line. And Adrian, Jeff and Paula were on the Republican.
Hmm, but you see, this goes to my, this goes into my whole point, Carol, about uh, elections and and contesting and not contesting. The one election I'd call you back to, Carol, was the first one I ran in, I think, two thousand fourteen or whatever it was. Um, when we had a little bit of an uproar in the town and um Kurt ran.
Right, and we had two.
Hmm, you had. You had Kurt running and then you had Steve Willard and Kathy DeRozers, but you also had Jay Lindy.
Right, Jay and Bob Burbank were petitioning candidates and they both won. On the petitioning candidate lawn.
Okay, and 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 that's what I'm asking, where in the Charter does it say that the Democrats and the Republicans can only put up two candidates? They can only win three seats.
Right, so. I'm gonna have to look.
And 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 while Carol looks at that, I'm just gonna tell you that the reason why I put up the Board, uh, Board of Selectmen or the First Selectmen as a. I'm not sure that as a five-member board, it would work appropriately. So I'm just telling you, I put that up because I would go to a seven-member board, but you can keep it.
Well, we could, Jeff, that's still viable idea. I think the, the, if you, if you think that expanding the number.
No, see, Jody, it's not that, it's not the number, the, there, there are, um, there are very good people. I I would, I would reference our current board. Um, very diverse group, different parties, all smart, common sense. Do what is right for the community. Um, the pre, the previous board was the exact same way. Very smart, different, different groups. If you do a five-member board. Jody, what you're saying is not always going to happen because politics are always being played in some way. So they're being played in our Charter Revision Committee. So you have to understand that was all that that's going on and you can sit there and put up the, the, the. First selectman or the chairperson is chosen, but. Uh, I don't necessarily know that it works really well with a five-member group versus a seven-member group, so.
So our Charter says in two, two zero three A. A political party may nominate no more than three members, one of whom shall be the designated nominee to the office.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, then, then, then Carol, I a hundred percent agree that you should allow more people to run. I am a big believer in contested elections.
So, so, so Jeff, did you believe, if you believe that this was part of your other. Seven-member board idea and bringing it together and you want to take this off the table and explain.
No, 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 listen, this is not me. I I am one member of a seven-member committee.
You're the one who put it on the board.
I understand, but it might be a good idea for everybody else. For me, it's, it's not, it's no longer a good idea.
So you want to, you want to oppose this?
I I will say no, but you've already had five different people that, had four different people that had said it's a good idea.
We have, we have, we're, we're talking about the idea, Jeff. We haven't rendered an opinion of the idea per se. So and and just like with Carol, I think you're, you're, you know, as Adrian said with Carol, I think you're, you're thinking being in this role is something we want to hear.
Well, I just don't believe that in a five-member board, it works as well as it does in a seven-member. That's, that was my opinion. You have a larger group, you have more people, you have the ability to sit there and. And not allow politics to totally sway everything that you do, to do what is right, not what is politically correct for your party.
Yeah, but to my, I I'll point this out. So when I was on the Board of Finance. We purposely elected Dan Warren, who was a Democrat, even though the Republicans ran the board at that point. And we did that because at that point in time, he was the most qualified person for that spot and we felt like. He could navigate both sides of it, you know, so I I think there is opportunities on boards when boards are open to it. To look at the candidates and say, that are, that are on that board and say, you know. We've got a bunch of Republicans on this board, but maybe, maybe the people that want it are too political. If we have a Democrat or if if we, maybe you'll have Democrats that say, hey, we have a Republican that'll cross the aisle. Let's let that person run this and and that way it'll feel more fair for everybody. So I I think there's opportunity there. I think it's, politics will always play a part with it. Listen, it doesn't matter who's chair of the board. Politics are always gonna play a part in the board on some level. But I I still, I personally agree with the, this idea that. Know that 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 position is is put forward by the board to pick who's gonna be the person guiding them, you know?
I think it definitely has value on a seven-member board.
I think it has value on any board, personally.
Okay.
All right, let's, let's move on. Uh, I, one of the things that just came out of that discussion. As a potential action item is to expand the number of possible candidates for the Board of Selectmen?
I'm gonna say I'm a no right now, because.
Yeah, you're going in the reverse direction.
We're having a prob, we're having a problem and both Republicans and Democrats are both having a problem putting enough candidates forward for all the positions that are open in town.
Qualified, qualified.
I think qualified or not qualified, it's still, I think on both sides, it's hard to get people that. That that want to run, you know, because these positions, they take time and they take energy and and you can. You know, I I think most people realize and say, well, even if I'm qualified, maybe I don't have the bandwidth for this. So.
All right, well, I I penciled it in, I just took it out, never mind.
Sorry.
Something else that I just put in also while we were chatting that I've heard. Uh, bandied about and while we're talking about Board of Selectmen. Is splitting the Board of Selectmen terms. Right now, everybody is up for election every four years. The other boards and commissions have split terms. Is this worth considering?
I think staggered terms on Board Selectmen. Really good idea, because it gives continuity to the board. Um, the way that our Charter, and that's if our Charter is, if we're changing the Charter on. If we're not, there's a chance that we're gonna end up with the majority of the same electorate. But if we do change the Charter, increase the number that are on the ballot. There is a chance that we'd be losing the entire board with a history of what was going on, so. Staggered terms, I can think are good on every.
Carol, even though I agree with you, I agree with you, that staggered terms are appropriate. But you are now, you are now putting so much authority into the Democratic Town Committee and the Republican Town Committee because. There'll be three members that are in one cycle and there's two Republicans. And there's one Democrat. And now the Democrats put up two people and the Republicans put up one person. The Republicans can only gain one seat. It's, it's a rigged election. And it will be a rigged election. I mean, and and it's difficult to even have a seven-member board, but you can't do it on a five-member board.
I see your point.
Oh, I agree, you could, you, we should, because continuity is a huge, huge piece of it.
Well, I mean, the upside is that you do have continuity on the manager's position, the town manager, so.
No, a hundred percent, Adrian, and that, that was the best thing that we did. Hundred percent, it was the best.
But your, your, your point is valid, that it it does make it a lot harder for the, for the other party.
Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna. Carol, I agree, I would do it. I would do it with a seven-member board when you're having four people run and three people run. But if we keep minority representation, which we were, we're required to do, it's a lot less than a seven-member. It's only two people from the other party in a seven-member uh, committee. So if you think about that, you know. You got five open seats and uh, the Democrats could run five people and, you know, to to win. The seats, I mean, it it's just, it's hard, Carol. It's hard on a five-member board. I can sit there and see the math working so that. You have two people in one election and you're just only focused on getting one person elected and getting one person that number of votes and it's. They're gonna get, they're gonna get put on, they're gonna. Gonna get put on.
I hear what you're saying, Jeff, but if you look at section one oh one three, transition of our current Charter. Okay, and if you go and look under zoning Board of Appeal. There was a transitional, and that was a five-member board.
Yeah.
Right, at the regular municipal election to be held in May of ninety-nine, there shall be elected three members for a term of four years. And two members for a term of two years. And that was to phase in this transition.
Hmm.
Um, then it said after regular municipal election, two thousand one. There is a way to phase it in for the transition clause in the Charter.
Um, yeah, but. Carol, I agree, but you have to get to seven members on that board. And if you go to seven members on that board and seven members on the Board of Finance, you are splitting your resources and your available candidates so far. That it's counterproductive, i- in my estimation. I only humbly from having to deal with it, I'm just telling you. So you can do it and you guys can sit there and say that you want to have, uh, uh. You know. The terms, the terms alternate, three and two, three and two. You're going to come back with a really. Difficult process because the parties are gonna control even more than they currently control.
I wasn't saying to increase the number on the Board of Selectmen, I was just saying to increase the number. At the electors of our town and vote. Rather than trick them, just increase the number so there's more candidates that are able to put up.
I I agree, I agree, Carol, with that. It was the staggered terms concept of three, two.
Yeah, I would say right now, I would say notice staggered terms at if the boards stand as they are, so.
Why is it, but 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 let's go to Carol's point. Let's go to Carol's point, sorry, Bob. I agree with Carol, more candidates.
I agree with that.
More candidates. Why is staggered terms appropriate for some commissions and not for the Board of Selectment?
Because as he, there's only five. There's only five on the Board of Selectment.
There's only five on planning and zoning.
Not as, it's not quite as political as Board of Selectment is.
Exactly. Then when's the last time we've had a, when's the last time, Bob? Cause you've been there. When's the last time you had a contested election in planning and zoning?
Don't know. I'm sorry, it's, it's rather quiet, Bob. Well, I couldn't hear that. What was that?
Don't know. I know I was elected uncontested, so.
Contested.
All right.
So about Carol's idea is to change, I think is to change section two oh, three A, where it says a political party may nominate no more than three members. And I think what she's saying is why are we limiting to three?
I think you could probably limit it to four. That might be a fairer. And then minority party representations is going to force you to, you know, you wouldn't get more than three on even if you ran four, so.
Well, this is what I was saying before, opening up to allow more candidates. And everybody said, whoa, we can't find candidates now.
I, I listen.
You were, you were, you were saying to expand the current Board of Selectment to seven total members.
I wasn't.
I, I put that, I put that to think about, yes, because Jeff, you would put seven in general when you were combining the two.
So Jeff, when you said you, you're meaning you, Jody, not you, Bob, is that?
I'm sorry, I heard Bob. I thought Bob meant to say that he, he was thinking of expanding the current Board of Selectment to seven members.
Jody's a ventriloquist.
Yeah, okay, my bad. I'm sorry. I had my eyes down. I was reading the charter.
No, that's fine. That's fine.
Okay, so.
Wrap that, move on.
Saying no to this, okay.
I would also, I, I would put though increased number of candidates. Don't we have that?
I had it and then I took it off.
Oh, you just, you had it and you took it off? Why'd you take it off? It's like, you just like that delete key.
Hat and, and Karen, any, any input on anything we talked about?
They're over there doing planting or something. I don't.
We're not doing planting.
Carol's got, I'm trying to work her wind yourself. She needs more plants.
We're very shy right now.
Okay, speak up if there's something you guys want to input on here.
Definitely, thank you.
All right, we're almost at the end here. So uh, town meetings adjustments. Does anybody know what that's about?
Oh, the, the idea is that you would align. And if we're not, I, I think we definitely should look at this, especially if we're talking about not doing the town council idea. If you adjusted the town, if you adjusted when we have our, not just our town meeting, but our, I think it really, that was supposed to be more about budgeting and town meeting. With your referendums.
Wasn't that though to increase the threshold of rants and things like that that force us to go to a special meetings, what I believe that was about?
That's the first one. That's the first one. Dollar amounts to trigger town meetings. It's on our list.
Okay. Oh, town meeting adjustments, okay.
I think this is aligning them with when they happen, but I think we, we now have molded that into referendum voting. That's now five. Is that five? One, two, three, four, four.
Ca- Carol, you said something at the last meeting about the town meeting versus the Board of Finance public hearing. What, what was, what were you, what were you addressing on that? Were you addressing that the town meeting could really be morphed into the public hearing?
No, I was just saying if we were going to try to align our town budget referendum with the RAM referendum, that would mean that they would have to move everything up. Like I was looking at the Hebron's charter, because they, as you know, did that. And there's um, they're in the middle of April rather than the end of April with their public hearing. And like I say, they don't hold it down by the union. Directly to referendum. So I was insane to merge the two. Because the, I'm not sure, but I'm, I'm pretty sure that there be the science does have the whole hearing.
Yeah, I, I think I read that, that they're required.
That too, right.
Public hearing and then after the public hearing, they set the budget and, and Adrian, you'll know this, but they move it to town, the town meeting, the town meeting votes, and then we go to referendum. There's a lot of detail as to if we don't have enough people for the town meeting and.
Well, what you could do though, what you could do is just hypothetical, but you could still have a town budget meeting. But the town couldn't, at that meeting, you couldn't reject the budget, but you could reduce it. So you could still do the thing you do now. And then move it to a town, a town vote. And still allow people to have a say, but not necessarily reject it. It's currently now, if it gets rejected at a town meeting, it goes back to the Board of Finance. You could move it to a full wa, a full town vote. You could still keep the town meeting in places away for people to line item things they disagree with, the same way we do now. But then once that line item is pulled, it would then go to a town vote. And that would kind of be the happy medium. So you still keep the town meeting so that people can have a say on, you know, because usually people usually show up to these things to, to add things. They show up because they're mad about something that's too hot. You know, they don't want their taxes to go up. So you still give them that opportunity. But then you still try to keep it on schedule. And then if, if. Go ahead.
No, go ahead. I just, why can't you move, why can't we? And I know it's difficult, but why can't we?
Move it. Here's the thing, if you move it and you don't have a way to force it, if you still keep the town meeting, as is in the charter, then that budget can be rejected and sent back to the Board of Finance and then it screws your whole schedule up going forward. Then your referendum doesn't work. To Matt to line it up with Hebron.
I, I'm with you. And so under eight oh, two, in, in, in the section C, it says additional duties, it's five C. Right? The Board of Finance shall hold at least one public hearing. You know, why don't we merge that public hearing and the town meeting into one activity?
It still doesn't prevent them from saying no and messing up your schedule.
I understand, but without saying no. So the Board of Finance listens to what everybody says. Now the Board of Finance is still in a regular session. They can go up and go down based upon what they hear in that meeting. And then the Board of Finance would pass that on to the referendum.
Because the one thing that people love at town meetings right now, doesn't happen often. But they love right now and, and then, you know, in the fourteen years I've been living in town, the one thing I have learned is when you go to a town meeting, it, it makes people satiated to at least be able to have a vote about taking things out. Now, it doesn't always happen. But the fact that they can, if there's an issue, if they can, if they can line item something, well, for instance, I'll give a perfect example. If the town tractor had been at a, at a, at a meeting, it would have probably gotten pulled. But instead it was on a small little side thing and, and it got approved. But if it had been a town budget, it probably would have been pulled out as a line item.
So those forty-six residents would have controlled that item.
Yep. And that's why people, that's why small towns are small towns. We let it happen now, right? And it makes people happy. Do I agree with it all the time? No, but, but it happens. And I can tell you, I can tell you though, you know, you know, there were town meetings that were contentious that, that a budget got voted down and sent back to the Board of Finance. And I can tell you, one of them was when eliminating the state trooper was proposed. Right? So people want a say. The question is how do you give it to them?
So I would sit there and, and.
Your fit, your take is that by going to a full wide town vote, that's the main, that, that's their say.
Well, that is, that is the ultimate say is you, you went to referendum and you allowed people to come and exercise their right to vote.
And personally, I don't disagree with that, but I, I think everybody on the board would, you know, that's does anyone else have an opinion on this?
I'm not even sure what we're discussing, to be honest.
Do you keep the town meeting right now? If, in order to do the adjustments, right? To merge them and keep on a schedule. You have to eliminate the town meeting. You can't just merge it. You have to eliminate it or have it, but not have the public have the ability to reject the budget at that point. The Board of Finance can make an adjustment to it. But the town, and maybe you have the town residents be able to make an adjustment. But no matter what, at the end of that meeting, you would have to structure it so that it has to go to referendum. You wouldn't be able to have them say no at the town meeting to the budget and send it back to Board of Finance. You could arrange it so that it automatically goes back to Board of Finance and they have a say and they, and they do what they want. But no matter what, at the end of that town meeting, a budget has to be sent to referendum, full stop.
And that is for us to be able to hold the referendum for the town at the same time as RAM. Because the date for a regional referendum is set by statute. And that is Tuesday following the first Monday of May. So that's why when Hebron redid their charter, they said that the um, Board of Finance shall hold a public uh, hearing on recommended budget, not later than the third Tuesday in April. And then within one week after the public hearing, the Board of Finance shall present a budget for vote at the annual budget referendum. And that budget referendum is the Tuesday following.
So I think this is a keep because it's connected to the referendum on above, right?
Yep.
This is the much more difficult. Us saying we want the election to coincide with the, the regional RAM referendum is easy to say.
Well, and, and it makes a lot of sense to do this because with the expanded voting, it's going to be a little more taxing now on the, on the registered voters and on the, on the polling folks. You're putting a lot on them right now with this early voting. And then if we have early voting and then a RAM referendum and then our referendum, it's just, it's, it's, it's a lot of work.
Okay, so, so it, uh, I, I would ask, I'll ask everybody, is it, can we merge the public hearing that the Board of Finance has to have and the town meeting without having the town, like keep it, it is an open meeting until a budget is finalized. Like that meeting could go on for, for days. It could go out for hours and the Board of Finance would have the ability to adjust their budget on the fly.
Well, we do have showers in the community room, the new one.
We do, we have, we have it in.
Like a filibuster.
The gym too.
A filibuster.
Are you suggesting like the Board of Finance has their public hearing? Then it adjourns to the budget meeting, but we don't take a vote. People, motions to.
No, I think you have the budget meeting and then it adjourns to a Board of Finance meeting to then push it to referendum.
And, and it could come back. It could come back to the, to the open public here in the town.
Are we, are we solving for this here or do we just want to say keep and move forward?
Keeping forward, I'll vote for that.
Yeah.
Watch out the details later.
But fairly complicated, sounds like.
Yes.
Well, is, is that keep, is that keep? I'd, I'd like to hear Carol and the ladies.
I say. They haven't identified themselves as ladies. I think you need to.
I say keep and move forward with that, please. Karen Madore, keep and move forward.
Okay. We have a majority of this.
Oh, so now we don't want to hear from Ms. Billings? Are you keep, are you a keep, move forward?
Yes.
Okay. So now we have a quorum.
Yeah, we um, we skipped over one thing here just because it was kind of out of order. The ordinance procedures, major versus minor. Again, can we define what, what exactly we meant by that? It's basically taking out the difference between major and minor and giving the Board of Selectmen the authority to create an ordinance without having to go to a town meeting.
So if we were to do that, um, I just pulled a lot of like different procedures from different towns. Hebron is one. So they have in section four oh, five, power of over rule ordinances adopted by the Board of Selectmen. And I believe it was Southington. They have at least one public hearing, five days of notice given by publication. So we would have to I don't know if I, I don't know that I would be in favor of this thing that all ordinances could be enacted by the Board of Selectmen without public hearing and public vote on some. I, I know ordinances, we have day-to-day operation. I just think we have to clarify and give greater definition to minor versus major. And I've been trying to research to a lot of other towns, how they do that with.
My take is I, I, I would, I disagree with you, Carol, on that. I think that you allow them, you allow the Board of Selectmen to do both, but I think for clarification's sake, we should have in the charter, in that section, what townspeople need to do in order to repeal one.
And I'm hearing you on that, but just like when I was talking about at our first meeting about town clerk elected versus appointed, I said that the town clerk position is the only elected official that there is a statute to remove that elected official if they were not doing their duty. And that is, it's a long drawn-out process. The same thing with a resident having to petition on ordinance to have that ordinance repeated. So based on that same thing with it being a long drawn-out process to remove an elected town clerk, it's a long drawn-out process for someone who may not understand the process.
But it, but it doesn't have to be. That's my point. We can make the threshold lower. We could make the threshold lower to push an ordinance to a, or you could say you can't pass an ordinance unless it goes to a town, instead of having a town meeting, which I think again, you don't have enough people show up to. Instead of having a town meeting, have it go to, have it go to a, you know, go to your referendum on your yearly voting, you know? Why couldn't you do that?
Saying to have an ordinance go and be on a ballot?
Why not?
I, I, I don't object to that. But I'm just saying for the Board of Selectmen to just enact an ordinance, um, some of the ordinances, um, you know, the Blight ordinance, first one we had, we had over a hundred people that showed up to that a couple of years. So people do show up for those.
But realistically, they, they, again, you're saying, you know, a lot of times we don't have a hundred people. The majority of the times we have forty or thirty. And they're making a decision. So you have less than, you know, you have what, one percent of the voting public is making a decision.
Correct.
Which is a horrible way to run a town.
But I, I hear you, but that's thirty people or forty people versus five.
Five that are elected by three thousand two hundred, not forty very vocal people. But I guess the, and Catherine.
They're elected, right?
Yeah, Ca- Catherine put in here actually a pretty good point in the chat, you know, what is major, what is minor? And actually, when I, when this came up, that's what I was thinking. It's like, look, if it's, if it's a fifty dollar or below, fine. Let the Board of, or whatever it is, a hundred dollar, two hundred, whatever, let the Board of Selectmen do it. It's something that's major that the town should do. So a- again, I'd be in favor in keeping this and trying to have someone work, work something out to bring all this group.
But Jody, for reference, a fifty dollar, fifty dollar a day fine is fifteen hundred bucks a month, so.
Well, whatever the number is.
You get into the.
Per occurrence or not per day, sorry.
But you end up getting into the nuances of it, do you know what I mean? Trying to define major versus minor becomes so complicated. I think it's better to say you let the Board of Selectmen do it and then you give people a way if they disagree with it to repeal it and make it easier. The state has a statute that says gotta do ten percent, blah, blah. We could actually lower that threshold and say if you get five percent of the previous voters to, to sign a petition, then. to, to sign a petition, then that, then that ordinance, instead of going into, you could have a ninety day hold and instead of it clicking at ninety days and becoming an ordinance, if someone gets the petition together and they get five percent, then it automatically has to go to a townwide vote. You know, you can do something as simple as that.
Okay, we're not going to decide this tonight. Okay, we're, we're trying to decide whether we're going to move forward on this. So.
And can I just add one thing, Bob, for Jody? Jody, the Board of Selectmen are already empowered to set fees and fines. We have an ordinance on the books that allows them to do that. Okay.
Carol.
You're welcome.
I think, uh, a better definition, however challenging it may be, uh, a better distinction between major and minor is certainly in order. I can't find anything and I frankly, I frankly don't know what the difference is.
Nobody does. That's the problem. And you're going to define something that nobody's going to agree with, so.
Carol, one, one question. I thought I read somewhere where it talked about the number of petition, petitioning uh, residents needed to revoke something. Do you have that section for me, like?
Are you saying in the Charter?
In the Charter, yeah, I thought there was, like, there, I thought there was a, a, a number like five percent and they had to have their signatures verified. I'll, I'll find it later. It's okay. I'm in favor of going forward with that because, again, it's one of those inefficient issues. Okay, is the way, is the way that I just defined this what, what we intend? Yep, that's fine. All right. Well, I, I would, I would sit there, the Board of Selectmen is already allowed to make minor ordinances. It's a question of what's a major ordinance? That's really what the question is. It's the definition of what the Board of Selectmen has the true authority to do without bringing it to a town meeting.
Yeah, and I think, and I think the other point here is, uh, what is the right voice for the town? Right? Not having a pub, not sending town meeting is okay, but I, I think I heard Adrian suggests their notice. Or is there something that goes into, you know, Board of Selectmen meetings and then they're gonna vote on it, you know, two meetings from now or one meeting from now to give town public speak time, something like that.
So section one oh five of the Charter, Jody, defines in H, a minor ordinance, but it's a very like gray, gives a couple of examples. Um, so I've been looking at other town charters to try to see how they define major versus minor.
Let's all agree just to move forward on this, uh, you know, it may not, it may not go anywhere, but somebody needs to, to dive into this. So it's, it's keeping of moderate complexity.
Well, I like, I might hear your definition of moderate then.
It ain't easy. It ain't rocket science.
Oh, that's, that's right. You are almost a rocket scientist, so this would probably be very, very simple for you.
I have designed things that go into space. Yes, thank you very much. All right, so we have actually gone through all of these things. I, I highlighted in yellow the things that we said were relatively simple, but Adrian's low hanging fruit. Um, maybe I should highlight and red the ones that we call complicated. I don't know. Um, so in keeping with what I was proposing, uh, do we have anybody that wants to step up and say, I want to adopt this or that, you know, right from the start? Anybody who feels strongly attached to any of these concepts and wants to grab them? I'll work on the ordinance one. Okay. There we go. That's one down.
Why don't you change the colors so we can see who, what belongs to who? Thank you.
Wait a minute. Didn't mean to highlight the. Okay. Um, I'll, I'll jump in and do the dollar amounts to trigger town meetings, I mean.
I would suggest you reach out to Eric on that. He had some starting points, I think.
Okay. Good suggestion. Thank you. Town clerk position. That's an important one, I think, from the amount of conversation we had about it. Anybody wanna? Anybody other than Carol? Come on, we need some volunteers.
I'll work on that one as well.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. You're going for the hard ones, huh?
Let's go. You took the, the one I was gonna work on away, so let's.
Yeah, I understood. Here, since I'm not on the Board of Selectmen, let me look at the, uh, chairperson concept. Carol, there must be something that you feel strongly about.
Um, I can go ahead with the referendum voting, aligning.
This one here?
Okay, it sounds like you already had done some research on that.
I did, do all the, I've kind of been looking at a lot of stuff, anyway. Okay. And then, so I guess that would run hand in hand with the town meeting adjustments. Merge for the finance budget public hearing and now, so.
They are related.
If I can go ahead and just grab both of them.
Okay.
Oh, you know what? I'll take, um, I'll take the town clerk then, so Jeff doesn't have to. The, we're running out of things to assign.
Okay.
Jeff, you all right with that?
Sure, have at it.
I'll sit there and make my, my points on it.
Karen Mador, I'll take early voting and dates of the.
I couldn't hear you.
She's gonna do early voting.
Early voting and dates of elections.
Okay.
Take both those.
Okay.
Patty, with Patty.
Karen and Patty.
Together, yes.
We get, I didn't know we could do things as a group.
There's always a first.
Is it Patty with an I or a Y?
I or Y, no.
Well, maybe it's I E. Why are you limiting her?
It's a Y.
Well, I guess you could put me down for that, um, increased number of candidates. Relatively simple.
Yeah, okay. Jody, is that with a Y or an I? All right. And Karen and Patty, you said you'd do dates of elections also?
Yes.
I think we've got everything assigned. Everything that we decided to keep.
All righty, Bob, can you, can you refresh the memory? What's the charge for these individuals that are assigned to each of them?
All righty, let me bring that back on back over here. Okay. So research, present. I won't say defend.
Pros, cons, maybe?
Yeah. Research, present, uh.
Do we have to build dioramas? Like, what's going on here?
Only just then, just then diagrams.
I mean, he's got like six bullet points. It took up a whole page. He must not have been able to sleep last night.
I did this in fifteen minutes this afternoon.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, no, I think we get it. Research it, pros, cons, and present that to this group.
Well, not just that. I mean, okay, what's being proposed, how it will be implemented, what any transition might look like, for, you know, considering how things are done now. What are the implications and ramifications on the rest of the Charter and greater town functioning? Okay, I want a, a real broad, you know, to the extent that, that you can think through these things, you know, we should give them their, their, their due, uh, due diligence.
Me know no much. Me just give you paper. Now, Bob, can you just, can you send us your little, I shouldn't say your little, your actionable sheet here?
Yeah, Bob, actually, if you could send me that action item and sort of bulleted what the expectations are for each of us, I can add it to the minutes.
Yes, I will clean this up and I will, uh, cut and paste from this and I'll send it to everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Speaking of, you can memorialize it, yes.
Do we need to approve the previous minutes? And as a side note, do we want to grab the notes that Dennis made from the previous public hearing and include those before approving?
That's a good question. I we don't have those as agenda items and we can't add those to the agenda.
Well, you have approval of minutes, right?
We don't actually.
Oh, well, then we don't have to address it.
Yeah, we're gonna have to put it on next week's meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, wait, there's the, the next, if we're done with the, the stuff that, that we set out to do, there is another public speak. So do we have any members of the public left? We have Leanne, we have, we have Catherine, uh, so anybody want to say anything?
I do.
Catherine?
Hi. Good meeting, guys. I, I just, I'm a little confused about things. Um, you went through these with the intent of, are we gonna go forward with it and ought to have a discussion? I feel like some things were just like the town council or whatever. I never heard really any research done on that, whether, any pros and cons on that, and it was just decided, yeah, we're not doing it. And that, that confuses me. And the other thing that confuses me is having Carol, I disagree with the fact that, I think it's unfair to have Carol, um, going through her own definition of what she, if she should be elected or, um, appointed. I think that, I think all of these should have research and pros and cons. And I just, it seems like every time we go into it, it just seems like there's so many areas within the Charter itself, that if we took a look at and reworded or reworked it, it, we might work out some of these issues that we have here. There may be better ways in which to do things just by taking some of the definitions of that Charter and reworking them, so. That, that's it. I'm, like I said, I'm just confused because I don't know what's I, I'm just not sure of what the, what, what your options were here or what your objectives were here. Was it just to like take things off the table? And if that's so, fine. I just, I just got confused. Somebody can say something. It's okay.
Uh, Leanne, do you want to say anything?
Yes. Um, about the, uh, uh, two or three things. About the ordinances, I can't imagine why that the blight ordinance, I think, is an excellent example. Um, I can't imagine why it would be a good idea to take away the option of having a public hearing. Um, you know, leaving aside the idea that we're not sure what a major and minor ordinance is, et cetera. Um, I can't imagine it would be a good idea not to have public input and have people um, have a chance to express how they feel about ordinances, because some of them can be very far reaching. And I think discussion of that ties in a little bit with discussion you've had about the town meeting. Um, this is still a very small town and I am not in favor of anything that's gonna cut down on a lot of representation at public hearings and town meetings. Um, I'm, I'm gonna disagree with the idea that was stated tonight that it's not a good way to run a town by having, you know, it, fewer than a hundred people, any given number at a town meeting. Um, we just had Memorial Day. People have fought and died for our right to show up and cast a vote. And there's always gonna be people who can't attend a town meeting. But I feel very strongly that the people who get themselves there should be heard and should be able to cast a vote, even if it still goes to referendum. I don't think that's a poor way to do things. Um, there have been town meetings that went my way, so to speak, on any given topic, and there have been votes that didn't, you know, that I was in the minority of. But I don't think you should take away any opportunity for people to show up again, even if it's a, a budget meeting that still goes to referendum. I think the people who take the time to get themselves there should be at least listened to.
Appreciate that, Leanne.
Um, pardon?
I appreciate, appreciate your input, Leanne. Um, I know we're not compelled to respond, but Catherine, I, I've been thinking about what you just said. And I just want to kind of go back over how we got to where we got, which is.
Bob, the meeting, the meeting is recorded. We, we went over all this, right?
Yes, let me, it's, it's, it's fine. I, I don't mind, I don't mind spending a minute or two, just, just to clarify this. So nominally, when the Board of Selectmen empowers this panel to exist, there is some sort of charge. We haven't been given one. So the items that we've collected have been a result of informal discussion between various town members as well as input that was solicited at the last meeting last week at the, uh, the public hearing and the, uh, the, the special meeting. From those inputs, we compiled this, this input. You were free to give whatever input you wanted if you felt that there was something that should have been included. That was the purpose of the, the public hearing. Uh, as well as what you're saying right now. Um, and if you have further input, it would be great if you would put it down in writing and submit it. It certainly can be, you know, we can certainly look at it. We're not trying to lock anybody out. But the flip side of that is that we have a very short time scale here, just because of the way things worked out. Um, when we were impaneled and when the deadlines are in order to get things on the ballot, when you work backwards and look at, this has to be presented to the Board of Selectmen and yada, 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 yada. So with that in mind, uh, I propose that we look at all of these things and make a first pass because we know that we're not going to have enough time or enough bandwidth to give everything the proper consideration. And I think we had more discussion here on some of the, the details and implications than I had, had envisioned. And I think that was good, because it allowed us to make a somewhat informed decision. You know, the, 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 the true test of, of leadership is the ability to, to come to a conclusive decision with incomplete, uh, incomplete information. And so I, I have to thank the, the other members, the other committee members here for their ability to think on their feet and come to some conclusions and make some decisions. It's not an ideal or perfect process. It's just the best that we can do, given the people that we have and the time that we have available.
Thanks, Bob.
Okay. Anybody else have anything that they want to add?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. So we are adjourned at seven fifty-three P M. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will stop recording.
Good job, Bob.